Development Agency Meeting to Order. City Recorder Craigor, please call roll.
Youth Counselor Hellick. Counselor Gudusi.
Present.
Counselor who?
Here.
Mayor Lube.
Here.
Counselor Robbins.
Here.
Counselor Slack.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Council President Wolf.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Are there any non-agenda items this evening? Okay. We will move on to Proclamations and Recognition. We have Disability Pride Month this month, and we have the City Manager's Office Assistant Hathaway to introduce everyone, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm City Manager's Office Assistant, Rebecca Hathaway, and tonight, we are proud to recognize July as Disability Pride Month, a time to celebrate the contributions, talents, and resilience of individuals with disabilities, and to reaffirm our commitment to building a more inclusive and accessible Tigard. We're joined this evening by several community partners who do incredible work to advance accessibility, inclusion, and equity across our region, and I want to extend a special thank you to Adventures Without Limits, and the Killian Lynch and family who were an Adventures Without Limits participant, the Autism Society of Oregon, Shriners Children's Portland, and Adaptive Sports Northwest. Your presence tonight helps bring this proclamation to life, and we're grateful for the work you do every day. I'm also excited to welcome Len Franzen from Ross Recreation. Len, would you like to come up? One of the designers behind the inclusive playground at Cook Park, and this space has quickly become a beloved feature in our community, and is a powerful example of what thoughtful, accessible design can achieve. Len has kindly agreed to share a few brief remarks about what the project meant to him and his team, if you'd like.
Well, yeah. Thank you.
Come to.
Sure, sure. Okay, are we good there? All right. Well, first off, thanks for inviting me tonight. This was an amazing project, and one that really was driven by the city's vision to make sure that they had a fully inclusive, barrier-free playground in their system. And they basically, you know, went through a, what did I say, like a competition to make sure that they were getting the best designs, and a very collaborative process. And I think one of the things that was really unusual and stood out to me in this is the community engagement that we were able to do. We met on a Saturday at the park with families, invited families to come down, and we were able to get input from the community and users, what they would want to see in this park. And, you know, there's no reason anybody should come to a park and not be able to use or access everything and play side-by-side with a playmate, or have a grandparent be able to access the space with a grandchild because they just can't get to the area. So, a couple of things that maybe stood out to me during those conversations was a family that came down, I think it was Jillian, maybe, and her, is it Jillian? Yeah. And I was standing with one of the architects, and he was very proud, showing about, you know, his Portland Accessibility Parks. And they said, "Those are great. We've been to them all, but they're just missing one thing, and our daughter cannot transfer from her wheelchair. It's her life support, it's her communication device. And we just need things that she can go on without having to take her out of this chair." And for us, it was, you know, kind of a lightbulb moment. Of course, that is a need that is missing in a lot of these inclusive parks. And so, I knew at that moment, we had a lot of things to offer that would be able to address that person's need, and the others that like her in the area. And so, once we were awarded the project, that's the first thing that came to my mind, was that we're going to be able to provide something for Jillian and her friends to gain access to this park. And it's proven out to be true. Every time I come down, it is packed. There's kids, old, young, like I said, grandparents. Because of the surfacing that the city chose, it allows access into the space. You can have a fantastic play area, playground design, but if you can't get into the space, then you haven't really, you know, you haven't completed the project. So, being able to come down and watch kids make freedom, you know, free choices of the direction that they want to go and really want to play. They're not restricted by ramps, there's no barriers. This is, if my playmate heads that direction and I want to go, I go, whether that's in a chair, or whatever it is. So, it's just a fantastic project. It has springboarded probably at least six, that I can think of, projects that are ready for approval before the end of this year, from here to Central Point, very, very similar to it. It gets a lot of attention. It obviously won an award last year for Project of the Year. But inclusion matters. It's very important. And my goal, honestly, long-term, as much as we'd like to celebrate this project, would be that it is kind of setting the standard for all new parks in every community. And every community has an ability to place a park like this in their system. And when we get to that point, I think that's when we really can celebrate that we've done something great. And I think Cook Park is a great springboard for that, and I'm just hopeful that that's where we are in the next 10 years. Every community has a park like this. So, I know I probably took too much time. I apologize. Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want me to read the proclamation? Okay. So, whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated each July to commemorate the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act on June 26, 1990, a landmark civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life. And whereas, an estimated one in four Americans live with a disability, and the City of Tigard recognizes both the accomplishments and ongoing challenges faced by people with disabilities, including physical, societal, and systemic barriers to full participation in community life. And whereas, the City of Tigard affirms its commitment to building a community that is inclusive, accessible, and welcoming for individuals of all abilities, and recognizes that disability is a natural part of the human experience, and that people with disabilities enrich our city with their talents, perspectives, and contributions. Whereas Tigard remains committed to advancing accessibility, equity, and inclusion through efforts like the ADA Ramp Improvements and partnerships with local organizations and advocates. And whereas Disability Pride Month honors the work of disability rights activists, and reminds us that a truly inclusive city is one where every resident is valued, respected, and empowered. Therefore, I, Heidi Lube, Mayor of Tigard, City of Tigard, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in the City of Tigard, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing the contributions of the disability community and supporting a more accessible and equitable future for all. The next item on our agenda is public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment by phone or video, please call in now or log in to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Anyone wishing to comment in person, there is a sign-up sheet at the entrance of the room. We did not have any public written comment that was received by noon yesterday. We don't currently have anyone signed up to speak in public comment. Mr. Wold, are there any phone callers in the queue, or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
Mayor, there are no callers in the queue, and no requests for a video comment.
Okay, thank you so much. We will then move on to our City Manager Report with City Manager Stockwell.
Excellent. Hello, Mayor and City Councilors. Tonight, we wanted to celebrate Tigard for all ages. We're proud of our programming that is designed for a wide range of community members, from our smallest ones to our seniors. So, take a look at these pictures. First, our Parks and Rec team recently hosted a puppy adoption party for some of our littlest residents, where they got to come adopt a stuffed animal and decorate their puppy's new crate. No, we did not give puppies to toddlers. Just wanted to clarify that. We were at full capacity with 15 children, got great feedback. One of the participants told us this. "Thanks for the fun toddler class. My kiddos loved it, and the crafts were super cute. Only complaint is that I wish there were even more. But another Friday fun event is coming up in August." Next slide. "We would also like to celebrate programming to our seniors. From the Police Community Academy to events at the Senior Center and SCAM presentations, we want to make sure that we're offering something for everyone, no matter your age. In fact, we're hosting another senior SCAM presentation tomorrow at the Tigard Senior Center from 11:00 a.m. to noon. You can find more out about that event and all of our summer activities on our event calendar online at tiger-or.gov, and then you can just search calendar, and everything will come up." So, thank you. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for City Manager Stockwell? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to Board and Committee Appointments, and we have Assistant to the City Manager Nicole Hendricks to present the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicole Hendricks. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here tonight to present the Mayor's Recommendations to fill our open Board and Committee positions, which are for the Audit Committee, Budget Committee, Committee for Community Engagement, Library Board, Town Center Advisory Commission, Tigard Transportation Advisory Committee, and Tigard Youth Advisory Council. We had quite a few different openings that we were ready to fill. So, we had applications that were received by June 11th, routed to the Mayor for consideration, and interviews were conducted by the Mayor and Counselor Slack on June 26th. And then, we were able to recommend appointments to fill all the openings but one on Town Center Advisory Commission, so that will be filled at a later date. We did send the recommended appointee applications, along with notes, to Council in advance, just for their awareness, and those recommended appointees were invited here tonight. So, I just want to take a moment to thank them for their time going through the process, and we're very excited to have you on board. I can't look at you, but thank you. And so, we do have also some celebratory treats in the back, if anyone wants to grab a little sweet treat afterward. And we are also going to do pictures afterward, if you want to come up and take a picture with Council. And then, the last thing is just, in an effort to streamline the process a little bit for appointing, we are asking Council to consider one resolution for all the Board and Committee Appointments, rather than a separate resolution for every Board and Committee. So, that was the Mayor's recommendation, and it was very welcome. So, we're excited to have you consider that tonight, and I'll hand it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Nicole. It was a pleasure to get to talk to so many community members, and I'm just going to say names for everybody on this recommendation, and please just raise your hand if you're here, so Council knows who you are. We have Henry Taylor Golby to the Audit Committee. Hi, Henry. Glenn Armstrong to the Budget Committee. Thanks, Glenn. Sunshine Navarro Shively to the Committee for Community Engagement. Welcome, Sunshine. Abe Mannion to the Library Board. Hi, Abe. Sarah Bentley to the Tigard Transportation Advisory Committee. Thank you, Sarah. Angeline Mai to the Tigard Youth Advisory Council. She's in the back over there, if you didn't see her hand waving. And Jett Switzer, also to the Tigard Youth Advisory Council. So, those are the individuals who are being recommended for appointment tonight. Are there any questions, or comments, or a motion, or Counselor Slack, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was a wonderful opportunity to meet all of you during the interview process. Really learned a lot about your passion for our community, and I look forward to seeing how you all contribute to making Tigard an even better place to live. And with that, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-27.
Wait a second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Counselor Shaw.
Hi, Mayor. I just want to thank you very much for being open to allowing a counselor to attend and to meet the community members. I'm really excited about this opportunity. And thank you also for streamlining the motion and the cassette. I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
We would be in for a very long evening otherwise. Will the City Recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-27. A resolution appointing City of Tigard Board and Committee Members to Audit Committee, Budget Committee, Committee for Community Engagement, Library Board, Tigard Transportation Advisory Committee, and Tigard Youth Advisory Council.
And we will start with Youth Counselor for an advisory vote.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. That is your first vote? Well done.
It is.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, Resolution 25-27 is adopted by unanimous vote of the Council. Thank you so much, everybody, and we would love to invite you up to take some fun pictures with us.
And then, Angela, do we have this option of Polaroid?
No, if you're interested.
Oh, we'll save it for... Um, yeah, we have like the many still for audit. Yeah, and we'll put the audit thing in there. Nicole, I don't have any, um, I have, um, I have one. I'll get a home app. Okay. So, we'll get you, you guys, your one. We'll get you yours today. Uh, yes. All right. And then, all, we'll make sure that you get... Wait, that was supposed to be some...
Yes. Are we going to make it to one? Yeah.
Say the answer.
Up there, ah, smiles.
There we go. Got it. Come on, Bert. Well, we are all part of Tigard today.
Okay.
We're all in a community. Thank you. Welcome. Please grab yourself a... Do you want to work on this? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And, um, I wish I were to take a shot. Funny, how did this happen? Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Actually, for sure. I'm so excited to have you. How are you?
Awesome.
Okay, wait, we started. Sorry.
Come up with this, and then other cities literally started stealing it.
So rude.
Yeah, it's fine. It's fine. So, thank you again to our community members who are stepping up to help make Tigard a better place. Excellent, thank you. Please grab a city pin from Nicole, so we can recognize you for your service. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is used for routine items. Information on each item is available on the city's website in the packet for this meeting. Items may be enacted with one motion without separate discussion, or Council members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Tonight on the agenda, the Consent Agenda, is the Cash Reservoir and Pump Station Owners' Representative Contract Amendment, the 2025 Pavement Management Program, Pavement Rehabilitation Project Contract, and Resolution Number 25-28, which is a franchise extension agreement with Comcast. Does anyone have any questions regarding the Consent Agenda or a motion? Yeah, Counselor who?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a clarifying question for the first item, the Reservoir and Pump Station Owner Representative Contract. So, Amendment Five, the contract was already extended to October 31st, 2025, so I'm just wondering, the current amendment is to pay for that amendment, or is the contract being extended beyond October 31st, 2025?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Ross Horton. I'm a senior project engineer and managing the Reservoir Team project. This amendment is to fund the Owners' Representative Contract through the end of the anticipated construction period, which will be through the end of October. The contract extension was already completed because the previous contract expired at the end of June, so we extended the contract out to the anticipated completion of construction, and now we're amending the contract to cover that additional cost. Otherwise, we would have had to do another contract amendment, one to extend the contract, you know, through the end of August, which is when the current funds are due to run out, and then have to do another extension for the costs in addition to that.
Okay. Is there any reason why it was not, it didn't come before Council, before June 30th, when it was about to expire? Because it's just kind of strange to me that you extended and then came to us expecting us to authorize it.
No, there's no reason for it. If Council decides not to approve it, then we'll have to end the Owners' Representative Contract early, because we won't have enough money to see the project to a completion.
Okay, I'm not saying I don't support it. I'm just wondering why, you know, it's about to expire at the end of June, but you just extended and then come to us expecting us to approve additional money. But I'm no problem. It's just finally strange. But thank you for the clarification.
Of course.
And then, if I may chime in slightly too, from the contract management perspective, this is Rosie McGowan, Contract Producing Manager. With the delays in the project, we didn't quite have enough time in terms of our required information to gather for you, for the AIS that we put together for you, and the timelines for approval. So, we didn't want the contract to lapse during that time in order to create more efficiencies with being able to approve. So, as Ross said, there are funds currently covering the work beyond this date for the Council approval, but we decided to extend to not have the contract come to an end. So, there was just some tight timelines that we had, unfortunately, in there as well, if that helps with that decision-making around it.
Yeah, City Manager Stockwell.
Yeah, Mayor and Counselor who, if I could as well. I had extensive conversations with the team to understand this before adding it to. This is a little bit of an unusual situation, but this is necessary to deliver to the people of this project that they're expecting. So, I appreciate that, and again, I had... So I, I appreciate that, and, and again, I had extensive discussions with both Ross and Rosie about this, and it was a kind of a first time we had done this type of contract, and we've learned from it, and we'll get this project done and, and make improvements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I, I'm not against it. I'm just curious, and hopefully in the future, in the council packet, there will be that explanation in there. It says it's urgent, so it's done this way. So thank you so much. With that, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, the consent agenda is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to amend the Twenty Twenty-Six Fees and Charges Schedule, and I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify in person or by phone, please log in now to get into the queue. That phone number again is five oh three nine six six four one zero one. And anyone wishing to testify in person should sign up at the sheet at the entrance of the room. We have Finance Director Kang here to present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Kang, Finance Director. For this agenda item, I am bringing forward amendment to the Twenty Twenty-Six Fees and Charges Schedule based on council guidance from June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. During this meeting, council directed staff to move forward with the option of increasing rates for residential enroll card services between two point two and three point five percent. A few things to note for council and the community is that there is a slightly different percentage rate. It's about zero point two percent. That was noted in the, the AIS, which is higher than what was previously proposed due to a one-month delay in the implementation that was requested by the waste haulers in order to have ample time to notify customers of the rate change. Second, I also want to note that there were some late revisions to the fees and charges schedule as annotated in the updated agenda packet, and they're highlighted in yellow. There were additional miscellaneous cart service items that were missed during the initial amendment that also required a rate increase that wasn't, and these rate increases were approximately one point nine percent. And then lastly, medical waste collection was recommended in the solid waste report to increase by seven and a half percent. And this was directly as a result of the disposal service vendors that were changed. That was notated in the report. It was a result of one of the vendors that operates the incinerator that, in Brooks, Oregon, that closed down, and they'll be switching to a different vendor that runs a completely different type of medical waste system. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. We do also have a representative from one of our solid waste haulers here who can also answer any questions.
Thank you. I will open it up for questions. Does anyone have questions for the Finance Director? Okay. Seeing none, there was no written testimony for this item. Mr. Wold, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by phone?
Mayor, there are no callers in the queue, no requests for video comment.
Okay, and we don't have anyone signed up in person, so I will close the public hearing. And now we have council consideration of Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Any additional questions or comments?
Oh, I was gonna move to approve Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Counselor Shaw.
I just want to thank all the hard work that went to this from both staff and also the waste haulers. And for those community members who are watching, we did have a robust discussion on June twenty-fourth, and I would encourage you to go back and look at that discussion. There is a number of open questions as opposed to Metro and some of the charges, and I know, Mayor, you mentioned the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium is investigating those charges. I know also Counselor Who was able to ask a question at Metro. So hopefully we'll have some resolution on some of the cost increases with regards to tipping. And again, just want to thank staff, and this is not an easy choice for any of us, but an additional cost have been significant for a number of reasons, so I just want to mention that in case, again, June twenty-fourth was when we had that discussion, in case there's questions from our community members.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say it's not a choice. We don't really have a choice on whether or not to raise these rates. It's required of us. But we did have a choice in how we raised them. There was a couple of different options. So, thank you for that. Any additional comments on the motion? Alright, seeing none, will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution amending the citywide fees and charges schedule, which was adopted under Resolution Number Twenty-five dash twenty and subsequent amendments.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. We will now convene the Town Center Development Agency. And I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone should call in now to get into the queue, five oh three nine six six four one zero one, or log in to testify by video. Anyone wishing to testify in person may sign up at the sheet at the back of the room. And we have Finance Director Kang to present the report. Welcome.
Good evening again. Again, for the record, my name is Eric Kang, Finance Director. For this next agenda item, I'm bringing forward a follow-up and final action required from the TCDA Board for the acquisition of a ten point three nine acre site. That was the former Tigard Cinema site. This action appropriates funds to use the debt proceeds council authorized on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and execute the purchase and sale agreement that council authorized on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. You may be wondering why only nine point one million dollars is being appropriated for a twelve million dollar property purchase that council authorized, and so just to quickly reiterate the funding stack for that, one point five million dollars was already appropriated and paid for out of fiscal year twenty-five dollars, and that was for the earnest money. That was in the PSA. Two million dollars will be paid from existing appropriations in the fiscal year twenty-six budget from the Tiger Triangle budget. And then the additional nine point one million dollars that's being asked to appro, that the board is being asked to appropriate brings the total to twelve point six million with the additional six hundred thousand that was notated as a, to cover property acquisition costs that was discussed at the last meeting. And so with that, happy to answer any questions on this action.
Thank you. There was no written testimony received by noon on Monday for this item. We don't have anyone signed up to speak. Mr. Wold, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video this evening?
Mayor, there are no callers in the queue and no requests for video comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Does City Council have any questions directly related to this item? Alright, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now we have board consideration of TCDA Resolution twenty-five dash zero-three. Director Robbins.
Thank you. I just want to note again that this is a big purchase. It's a lot of money. But I think it's going to a great project, something that's well needed, and I'm really excited about this, so.
Same. Director Schleck?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Finance Director Kang and team for all the work that has been done on this acquisition so far. Like Director Robbins, I'm also very excited about this acquisition. I think it has a lot of potential to benefit the Tiger Triangle and Tigard more broadly. Knowing that we don't have any parks in the Tiger Triangle right now, this gets us one step closer to having a park there, and I think it will be a really incredible park and a signature project for the City of Tigard, so I'm very excited about this as well. I recognize that it is a lot of money, like Director Robbins said, but I think it's well worth, well worth every dollar of it. And with that, I move to approve TCDA Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero-three.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion or comments? Seeing none, will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
TCDA Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-three. A resolution to adopt fiscal year twenty-six, first quarter budget check available to the Community Navigation Agency, TCDA Urban Development.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? TCDA Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-three is adopted by unanimous vote of the agency. Thank you, everyone. The next item on our, I will reconvene the City Council meeting. The next item on our agenda is the Equitable Engagement Report Findings, and we have Digital Communications Director Bariantos to introduce Enviro Issues. Welcome, Leandra. You're looking very sharp for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Louv and Council. I am Leandro Bariantos, City of Tigard. Forgot what I do. Communications Coordinator, bilingual communications coordinator, and I am so excited to be here. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and your continued support for equity and engagement work here in Tigard. Our path from the Public Safety Advisory Board to the Community Navigator Ad-Hoc Committee has brought us to this point. At the heart of this is a commitment to listening, learning, and evolving in partnership with our community as a city and as an organization. Tonight, I am extremely honored to introduce two individuals who have helped us do just that. And I'd like to please welcome Laura Peña and Christine Moses from Enviro Issues, our equitable engagement consultants. They've worked alongside our staff, community members, and stakeholders to help us imagine systems that are inclusive, equitable, and aligned with our community promise. They'll walk us through their findings and outline a path forward to strengthen our relationships, to build trust, and ensure all voices in Tigard feel seen and heard. Thank you, Laura and Christine.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Councillors, for having us. We are really excited to be here. This is a culmination of about nine months of work since September of last year, so we're really glad to close it out with a little bow. We are starting with some background and context, and actually, I'm gonna hand it right back to Leandro. And we've got about twenty-five, thirty minutes of content and then time for discussion and questions.
Back to me. This work represents the culmination of several years of focus on equity and community voice here in Tigard. If you recall, it began with the Public Safety Advisory Board.
Next slide.
Oh, next slide. Thank you, yes. First time.
Team effort.
Yeah, first time caller. It began with the Public Safety Advisory Board, or PSAB as it became to be known, created in twenty-twenty in response to the murder of George Floyd and the broader call for deeper accountability and access in government. By twenty-twenty-three, that work evolved into the Community Navigator Ad-Hoc Committee, which we recommend assessing our external engagement citywide before hiring a navigator role. Council approved that recommendation in early twenty-twenty-four, which led to where we are today and the equitable engagement assessment. That brings us to the question, should we invest in a community navigator to a broader, more important question? What would it take for equitable engagement to succeed in the entire city? It's not just about one role. It's about building systems, relationships, and trust that make sure everyone in Tigard can shape our future. With that background in mind and that history, I'd like to turn it back over to Laura and Christine to walk us through the assessment findings and report.
Okay, thank you, Leandro. Next slide, please. Okay, our fundamental question that we were considering, how can the City of Tigard foster equitable engagement practices that build trust, deepen relationships, and dismantle barriers to participation across communities? In addition to the question about that community navigator being rolled in, and Christine will tell us a little bit more about that in a couple slides. We had a particular focus on communities that have not had the relationships, resources, or capacity to interact with the city as much as others. Next slide, please. We ended up writing a, or synthesizing our findings in as much detail as we could without being overwhelming into a seventy-two-page report. We are not talking through that tonight individually. Mayor has it, amazing. But we wanted to outline a little bit about what the report is and what it is not. So the report is a collection of recommendations and ideas that reflect community priorities and also have some staff insights built in on current equitable engagement practices. It is a starting point or a continuation point for guiding deeper strategic discussions, prioritization, and action by the council and staff, and a catalyst for shared responsibility and deeper partnerships with historically marginalized communities. Next slide. On the flip side, what the report is not, it is not intended to be a strategic plan, an action plan, or an implementation plan, even though it is chock full of details that would be helpful, we think, into one of these plans in the future. But as it stands right now, it is not meant to be a fixed list of actions for the city to implement without some further conversations about how to operationalize and adapt the information in there. It is also not comprehensive of all possible voices or solutions, nor a blanket approval from all communities. Even within the groups that we spoke with, there were different opinions, and we know that no community is a monolith. It is also not a substitute for ongoing community engagement, nor a guarantee of immediate change. We tried to be really clear with folks as they were participating that this was an opportunity to listen and learn, but the report, again, is not a checklist of actions that the city is gonna implement without some more internal and external conversations. Next slide, please. Over to Christine.
Thank you so much, Laura. So overall assessment, next slide, please. First, I think it would be good for us, the three of us, to define what equitable engagement is.
Okay.
What do you think that is?
Pop quiz.
Pop quiz.
I know.
I've, I've come to find that equitable engagement is creating the infrastructure and creating spaces that folks feel welcome, that they can come, and they can share their true authentic selves and participate in, in, in any space.
Wonderful. Okay, that's our definition. Yes, go team! Thank you so much.
I also think the proclamation for disability pride also has the definition in there too.
Yes, it does. Absolutely. So, our overall assessment in this process, the community members really want to engage. The issue isn't apathy in most cases. It's access, awareness, and trust. Tigard, y'all are doing a good job. But the community wants it, wants you to go even deeper. You are, as counselors, out and about all the time, but the community wants deeper relationships. Keep in mind that these recommendations are focused on reaching groups and communities that haven't been reached before. We're not saying these actions aren't already happening, but rather that they might not be reaching these particular groups that we spoke with. I just want to remind you that the answers are in the room. You have the answers. There are staff members across the City of Tigard who have relationships that can be handed off and managed and deepened by collaboration and consistency. Building relationships with trusted community members means going to where they are and begin by building internal systems that respect relationships and not just transactions and complaints. So we're going deeper. We're recommending going deeper. Next slide, please. But first, we want to answer the question, should Tigard create a new community navigator position? We don't think so at the moment. The idea of a community navigator still resonates with some people, but we don't recommend creating a new position just yet. We think there's things to do before creating that position. Aside from financial constraints that Tigard and other agencies across the region are up against right now, we recommend that Tigard focus on strengthening community relationships across the organization and adjust some internal systems. First, we believe everyone in the organization, including staff and committees and volunteers, all have a role to play in advancing equitable engagement. It's not something that one person should be responsible for. This could easily set up the position to be a scapegoat, and if there is not enough process or cause them to burn out very quickly. We've seen this across other agencies and organizations before, and this is something that a lot of equity-specific positions have experienced over the years. that a lot of equity-specific positions have experienced over the years. Instead, we recommend reassessing the need for a navigator in 2028, '29. In the meantime, the city can build internal systems to distribute the responsibility more effectively and consider a navigator position in the future to help support others build their own relationships and keep them accountable. So I'm going to turn it back over to Laura because she's going to tell us who we spoke with.
All right. Thank you. We can move forward. One more slide. Who we heard from. Great. So we've got some numbers here on the slide. We heard from a pretty good cross-section of Tigard's community, including various community leaders, a lot of individuals, as well as internal engagement with council, the Committee for Community Engagement, Equity Advisory Committee, and Internal Committee, and city leadership, communication staff, and some other individual contributors across departments. We held 48 stakeholder interviews and spoke with 92 community participants across four focus groups and intercept surveys at four existing community events. We focused intentionally on groups, again, that historically have not engaged in city processes as much, and these included Latina communities, Vietnamese, Persian, or Iranian, and Black communities, as well as BIPOC small business owners, seniors, unhoused residents, and people facing financial hardship. And you can also see some of the other intersectional identities on the table on the screen, which is not inclusive of everyone, right? There were even more folks who participated. We ended up focusing on these groups by starting with broad data, the U.S. Census and American Community Survey, to, again, get a broad sense of what marginalized communities there might be in Tigard. We also know that these groups are often underrepresented and aggregated into much broader categories in those databases, so we went a step further and identified particular groups through conversations with staff and community leaders who have a lot more lived experience and a much more nuanced sense of the fabric of Tigard. Some of the groups that we acknowledged we were not able to engage with, we wish we could have, but we hope that the city will continue building relationships in the future include Muslim and Jewish communities, Pacific Islanders, including a small but growing Chukies population from the Caroline Islands of Micronesia, and veterans and disabled communities. So how great that the disability pride proclamation was also happening tonight, and there are so many budding relationships to continue there. Next slide, please. Community participant snapshots. So of the 92 community members who participated, 65% identified as Black, Indigenous, or person of color. 34% spoke a language other than English at home as one of their primary languages, and we were glad to see 100% felt welcomed and heard at the focus groups or intercept engagement, intercept survey engagements. And this was through an optional and anonymous survey, so we did not put them on the spot. We also had 62% women, 31% renters, 19% experiencing houselessness at the time, and more than 2/3 of folks who said that they worried about their financial situation sometimes, often, or always. And of note, this is not a statistically representative sample of the city, and in fact, it over-represents a lot of marginalized populations that often are not fully reflected in those databases. Next slide.
Thank you. So next slide, please. I'm going to take us into the recommendations. Yes. And through our feedback process with you and with staff, we wrote the draft, we came back, we had a discussion, here we are with the final report. We were asked to prioritize the first four steps. And so here is our recommendation for the four priority areas over the next year. Build authentic relationships. So continue doing your work, going out into the community by designating staff and council as relationship leads and agree on shared guidelines. So have the deep conversation about relationships, holding them, creating them, why do we do this, how can we support the community, doing a needs assessment back and forth. We know you're already doing a lot of this, though. Our suggestion is to focus in on a handful of community organizations and leaders to start with and do so strategically, so that you know who is building relationships with which groups. You probably already have a lot of our suggestions covered, so it's more about streamlining and sharing information across the council and the city's leadership team. We recommend that you work strategically. Create a city communications and engagement strategic plan, including frameworks, roles, and connections to the five Es on the wall, the community promise. Use this as your North Star, so your teams can rally behind a shared plan and vision, track and share progress that includes having a shared and internal database or customer relationship management CRM software. The purpose is to have transparency across the organization around who is involved, so there can be more coordinated efforts across the teams and departments, and make sure you're not overburdening specific relationships. And finally, train your teams. Train all staff in fundamental customer service principles, including cultural competency and the basic functions of each city department. So no wrong door. There is no wrong phone call. There is no wrong door. Everyone inside of the Tigard city staff can answer questions about other departments. Just superficial knowledge and the ability to pass that caller off to the right person. It's not directly, so any call that's not directly related to their department or role can be directed to the right point person. And now, I'd like to turn this over to Brent to talk more about how these actions can help Tigard further their community promise and the goals and that council and staff responsibilities.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Enviro Issues for all the conversations that we had on this. We had a lot of conversation, in particular, about these four priority actions. Sometimes, we get reports and they're just so overwhelming, we don't really know where to start. And so I think we have a good roadmap here at this point. And I will also say that the work is never done. We talk a lot about the five Es around here, but Leandro and I were having a conversation today, and if you translate the five Es into Spanish, then five Es no longer make sense because there's different letters that start each one of those words when you translate them. And so I think it's important to think that the work is always going to continue. One of the other conversations that we had a lot as we were going through this process was the interaction of all the Es and the community promise with each other. And so we're very committed to that. And then the one other thing we talked about, too, was really trying to help get across the organization that this is part of everyone's job, not really 100% of one person's job.
Next slide, please. I just want to help people hear you.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity and relay that, and I know, to get ahead a slide or two, I know the action tonight is for you to empower me to carry out this report with the entire organization and community and ask for everyone's help and support on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's been such a joy working with you. Okay. Next part. So, next slide, please. Okay. Building authentic relationships, theme one. So we distilled all of this incredible information and distilled it into seven different themes. And we're going to go through briefly the seven themes, and you don't have to hear me talk all the time. Laura's going to take some of them. And that's where those four recommendations, those first four action steps come from, are these seven themes. So, theme one, build authentic relationships. So, community members want to build relationships with city leaders, and of course, everyone plays a role on this. But as a starting point, we're talking specifically about increasing your visibility as council and staff leads, both to show a commitment to communities and to set the tone from the top of the organization. So our recommendations are, one is to assign council and staff relationship leads to build connections with trusted community members who can give you more insights into different community priorities. Go to where the community is already gathering. Instead of asking them to come to you, make sure you're going to them. And the council is already doing that. I know you are out and about, but maybe you want to wear your windbreaker instead. Maybe you want to just make sure that you have swag that tell people, I am a councillor, so they can come to you. Maybe at an event, ask the emcee of the event to do a shout-out, that you're here, and they can find you right here. So there are in-the-moment ways of ensuring that engagement is happening, that people are really being able to put a name and a face together. That's what we're recommending. Next slide, please. So, internal accountability. There is an appetite for a shared vision and guidelines for engagement internally. Equitable engagement is inherently flexible, so we're not suggesting a rigid structure. What we are suggesting is alignment on guidelines, frameworks, roles, tools, and an engagement toolkit we're asking you to create, the staff to create, for the city, so there can be more consistency and a shared language across teams. So recommendations include creating an engagement strategic plan, toolkit, and equity lens to help guide the work over time, clarify roles for all groups and committees involved in setting and implementing engagement strategies, and then again, incorporate the five Es to help keep staff and council accountable. This means connecting the actions in the strategic plan to each of those five Es in the community promise. By potentially putting the five Es into performance reviews, we're asking staff to live the values of the City of Tigard. And that idea can be a little scary, but that is really connecting values to actions and roles, and so this is happening, and you're not starting from scratch. Next slide, please. Department coordination. Community members and staff would like to have more consistent, coordinated engagement. We heard multiple stories about community organizations and leaders being contacted by different departments with conflicting asks and timelines. So the goal here is to help the city have more coordinated engagement by sharing information internally first. This could look a lot of different ways. One is that CRM, that Customer Relationship Management System for visibility and coordinated engagement. And we want to be able to make sure that council and staff have access to that CRM or to that database. But we are not suggesting that we track individual residents because that would be a huge workload and privacy issues would pop up, so that's not what we're recommending. We are also recommending that the Committee for Community Engagement, the CCE, and the Equity Advisory Committee, the EAC, which is a staff committee, get more involved to help connect the threads and support the outreach efforts across teams and communities. This might involve adjusting the charters and expectations for these groups, but the point is that you have people who already are highly engaged, highly knowledgeable, highly motivated, and they're connected, and they want to be able to meet the needs of what a community navigator would do, but on smaller and more individual scales. So Laura, I'd like to pass the next three over to you.
All right. Thank you, Christine. Theme number four is around cultural competency. So this is about connecting with communities at a deeper level by understanding more about their histories, their values, and experiences. This draws from several conversations and accounts that we heard about just how much easier it can be to have a conversation and connect with people who are knowledgeable and kind of understand your background. This can be things as simple as just knowing the common languages within the City of Tigard and important cultural holidays to make sure you're not booking city events at the same time, or, you know, have them be at least in concert with each other. But also having a little bit deeper knowledge about cultural practices and histories can help any city representative navigate interactions just in a more informed way. So recommendation highlights in here are developing cultural reference guides for some particular groups. This is something that should really only be done in partnership with community leaders or community groups so that it doesn't move into an extractive space. And of course, training staff in cultural competency. This includes, you know, the information in said guides, but also general principles about how to show up in spaces that might feel unfamiliar to you, given, you know, each of our personal backgrounds. This includes things like listening to understand, assuming positive intent, and having a curious mindset. And again, anything that we say about training staff is already happening in various ways throughout the city, so it's more about consistency across the board. Next slide, please. Theme number five, around community building. We heard a very strong appetite from community members for events and programming to continue to celebrate and bring communities together. So definitely a lot of kudos and mentions for events like Antigre, Black History Month celebrations, Pride Night Markets, to name a few, have all been big hits with the communities. But we also know that city staff has limited capacity and resources to lead and get involved in more events like these. That is okay because it takes us into our first recommendation highlight, which is to support capacity building within the community, so essentially make it easier for communities to be able to plan and hold their own events with some strategic support from the city, like expanding and reducing some barriers from the existing community events grant, and maybe providing some targeted logistical support for more accessibility. We also heard a lot of interest in having more dedicated spaces for community programming and gathering, so this ranged all the way from interest in having a standalone community center in the future to making properties like Fano Creek House available for rent and intergenerational programming at the senior center, which it sounds like there are some leads on that already. And tapping into community volunteerism. A lot of the people who participated in our engagement were also interested in continuing to get involved. Like Christine said, it wasn't about apathy, it's more about just knowledge and time, honestly, resources. But there are definitely people who are interested in volunteering, providing logistical support for grants or event planning could be one of those places to plug in and reduce some of the burden for the city. Next slide, please. Theme number six, awareness and access. So reiterating what I kind of just talked about, community members are eager to learn more about city resources and programs, but there just seems to be a lack of awareness and knowledge about how to get connected and where to find the information. So highlights here include using the channels that people are already using to spread the word more broadly about what's available. Things like WhatsApp and Slack came up, and also continuing to partner with schools, TTSD, but also some private schools in the area and places of worship. Training staff on major department functions, that principle of no wrong door that Christine talked about, so folks don't get bounced around to different departments, or contacts trying to get information, and interest in having a live phone operator and a welcome desk at City Hall. This is, again, specifically came up in the This is, again, specifically came up in the groups that we spoke with. Interest in having this more human element, especially for people who don't necessarily know where to start, can lead to more meaningful engagement. Next slide, please. Theme seven, removing barriers. So helping to reduce the burden for a community to participate and engage with the city. Things like publicizing the translation and interpretation services that the city already provides. So there are already avenues for this, and it's more of a matter of making it more broadly known, which blends into creating and training staff on clear accessibility guidelines and policies. So just making sure that staff know that these things are available. What are the options? How do they actually, excuse me, how do they actually get connected to these resources? Which I think also applies to council as well. And streamlining contracting and payment protocols for staff to be able to provide accommodations in addition to language resources, things like childcare, catering, and stipends. And the last note here for theme number seven is that it can be easy to think about these ideas. You know, they're maybe a lot more tangible than some of the other topics that we've considered, so they might be easy to see as low-hanging fruit and a place to start. But as engagement professionals, and I think a lot of folks here in the room and on Tigard staff know, you can provide all the bells and whistles to events and still have low engagement or low participation if there isn't trust and understanding within the target communities. So that's why we're really hammering on that idea of continuing to build relationships as the initial investment. Next slide, please. Okay, so that was a lot of information. Clearly, there's a lot of different directions that the city can go with all of this. So we just want to zoom out, remind ourselves of the four places to start: building relationships, working strategically, tracking and sharing progress, and training the team.
Next slide, please. So our specific request of you, as we close out this evening, is please empower the city manager to move forward with conversations about how to operationalize these recommendations and start with the four priority actions. Connect, contribute, and celebrate. And now I would like to turn this over to Leandro and to Brent to close this out.
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Christine and Laura. It's been an honor and a pleasure, and thank you so much for the work that you've done. And just showing the work that we've done so far. A lot of folks that we've heard from are adamant, you know, there's an appetite for this and more. And I just want to send her back on the five Es again. And I was going to have this, like, exercise where we closed our eyes and looked over at the five Es, but we're not going to do that. That, it hangs up in here, and we see it every single week. We see it as staff when we come into this room, and it's up here for a reason. And I think looking at these four first recommendations, these priority actions through the lens of the five Es of our community promise, really helps us align and gives us something that's attainable. Because when we deliver on those things in our core services, when we deliver on our community promise, it's felt, it's tangible. And a perfect example was tonight, was our proclamation that we did for Disability Pride Month. And we see it throughout the year. And if we can continue to systematize it throughout the city and we're empowered, I feel like we will continue to grow and Tigard will continue to be a leader in the space of equity and engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, we're interested in your thoughts about the report that was done and moving forward. I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned is it's definitely my intent to continue to work with the Employees Equity Advisory Committee on implementing this and talking about how to make changes with the city's leadership team to talk about how we do this. And then we've also talked about using the Committee for Community Engagement to really advise and talk about how we work on this moving forward. So I think those weren't really included, but I wanted to say that those are all resources that we intend to use after we hear from you and get to your direction tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and going through it so thoroughly. I know, I think that the city council and the city team is probably really in-depth for this, but this was a wonderful opportunity to really walk our community through the work that you went through and the report and the recommendations and outcomes. So really appreciate all the work that you did. And we've had robust conversations about this for a couple of years now, so it's really nice to have sort of what will, in the future, be a roadmap of our next steps. So opening it up for questions and comments and thoughts. Councilor Hu?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation. I definitely support empowering the city manager to carry out this function, but just a couple considerations. I'm involved with immigrant communities in different capacity, and just let you know that many of us are scared of what the federal government is doing right now, and that's a barrier. I don't know what the city can do, but when they talk about lack of trust, I just want to raise that point that this is additional barrier right now for the community members that I would want to reach at this point. And I appreciate their point of, as for council, to be more visible. And I actually started wearing my baseball cap identifying myself walking the dog now just at the park. I used not to do that because I prefer to lay low, but now I was just like, what the heck? I want people to know that council members are real people walking their dog in the park, and if they choose to say hi, so be it. That also means I have to be at my best behavior all the time, but that's fine. So, but just tied back to the current policy of, you know, for every two years, council member can only have $100 for our brand and gear, you know, so I'm paying out of my own pocket. So I'm not complaining, but just that's something when we go forward with, you know, making council member or team member more visible, what kind of support the city could provide, you know, so I don't have to buy my own gear. And finally, I think going back again to about council because that's what we have control over, I just want to remind everybody that our city charter does have a provision to, for the council to set council compensation. I'm not saying that for myself because I'm obviously perfectly fine with, you know, $700 a month stipend to serve on the council, but I realize that a lot of people just cannot do that because I, I'm not bragging, but I spend a lot of time on my council stuff and sometimes more than I spend on my own billable work. And I don't think people who are, I just don't think a lot of people can afford to serve on the council. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And we need more representation on the council, not only people who can afford to serve on the council, to be on the council, because I think all of us are homeowners, so I can really relate to the struggle of renters, to be honest. I mean, so, or any other group that needs two or three jobs to support their families. So I'm just throwing that out there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilor Wolf, welcome in.
Thank you. So just a couple things. Thank you, Councilor Hu, for those comments. And first to Laura and Christina, I just really want to thank you for your in-depth work. My goodness, over this past nine months that you've been doing this work, many of us have seen you at our events, really authentically engaging to connect there, and as you said, just out in our community, really gathering this feedback for us to reflect on and learn from. So I just really wanted to give you a heartfelt thank you for that. And I am looking forward to, so yes, my support absolutely on how we move forward on this. I jumped in in '23, kind of that post-PSAP conversation of what should this look like? So really grateful where we are right now, and I look forward to those conversations of how maybe we go deeper and not wider, because council covers a lot of territory. So how can we more thoughtfully really be engaged in ways where maybe that has us dividing up this work in a different way so that we can go deeper and be connected in our communities in ways that we haven't thought about? So looking forward to what's ahead of us, and just wanted to say thank you again. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Youth Council, Hellick.
Hi. I am just learning about your guys' work very recently, but I think it's really great. And I was wondering about, you mentioned how the five Es are different in Spanish, and it got me wondering, what languages did you encounter the most during your excavation? I'm not sure how I would call it. Interviews, interviews. So that we can work to make all languages and language speakers feel included.
That's a great question, and I think it's a continuing question because, like I mentioned, the databases, you know, give us some information, but it's honestly kind of limited. So for example, in the census, Asian languages are just a broad category, so it's hard to dig in and be like, okay, does that mean Korean or Vietnamese or Japanese? So we ended up kind of following the thread of conversation based on people who live and work and have deep knowledge of Tigard specifically. But we did learn, you know, Spanish, pretty straightforward, definitely a top language, and the city's already been doing a lot of great work. People even mentioned in the Spanish-speaking group that we engage with that they have seen more translations and printed posters and everything, so that's very much appreciated. Farsi is another significant group, Vietnamese. We heard some Korean communities. We weren't able to explore deeply about that. And then there's a lot of, there's a lot of other languages, so we're also cognizant that it takes a lot of time and effort and resources to translate and have interpretation and stuff for all of these languages. So we think it's reasonable, you know, to have, to translate things kind of upon request and have some of that, or some of those accommodations upon request, because you're not going to, I don't think it's reasonable to translate everything into 10 languages, given, you know, limited resources and time and everything. But you need to make sure that the information is out there about how to request that, how to go through the process, and so that people feel comfortable enough to ask for that, because it is going to require somebody to do more work, and that even can sometimes be a barrier. People don't want to be a, they don't want to ask someone to, you know, necessarily go out of their way for that. So it's all, comes back tied to trust.
Thank you. I am supportive of this continuing to move forward. I echo a lot of the comments. The only other thing I'd like to add is to make sure that we set a way to check ourselves. How are we tracking how we're doing? You know, maybe it's a roadmap that we can check things off, but also what is the cadence of coming back to city council and reporting on the progress that we said we would make? So really just having that accountability piece on making sure that we're doing the work that we say we're going to do. Any additional comments? Yeah, Councilor Schlag?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for your work. It's really wonderful to see how many community members were engaged throughout this process. I understand there's going to be a community picnic towards the, I forget the specific date.
Next Saturday.
Wonderful, yes. So really great way to culminate all of the work that was done in order to make sure that Tigard is living out its community promise. My one ask going forward for the city manager is that as we start to implement some of these proposals and recommendations, that council be briefed on what the actual costing looks like as time goes by and actual staff levels of effort. I understand there are levels of effort here, but once we start getting an idea of how much the time effort will be. The reason I ask is just because one of my big learning lessons on the council over the last year was regarding the Climate Action Task Force, which I think is a great idea. And then I got a bit of sticker shock when I actually saw what the cost was, because I had said, oh, this is a great idea, let's go forward with it. And then I saw the cost, and I was like, wow, that was a lot more expensive than I actually expected. Additionally, thinking back to this current budget period, we did ask that the city engage in a 3% discretionary cut on expenses. So I know we're trying to be very fiscally responsible, which goes back to our community promise as well. So I fully support proceeding with these recommendations. I just want to understand what the actual time and fiscal commitments will be in order to implement these as we go, just to make sure that we're balancing all of our priorities as a city.
Councilor Gudusi?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things with this coming year, I do see a great opportunity for our city in terms of increasing engagement. This year, Persian New Year and the end of Ramadan or Eid happen to fall at the same time on the first day of spring, and I know that we celebrate a lot of other cultures and communities, and that would be a great way to reach out and work with other communities for 2026. And I know that one of our responsibilities as, you know, council is to try to look at these underrepresented communities and really work with them to get that voice here. And hearing a lot of the other languages being spoken, I think that we should basically split up and learn a new one. I call dibs on Farsi, and then y'all can decide on Chinese. All right, everyone else, all right, great.
Councilor Shaw?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, too, the engagement that you all did to put together the 72-page paper, and also the fact that you reduced it down to four priorities. So I'm very appreciative. And also to our team and staff, because they're very innovative, they're very creative, they do a lot with very little. And part of my concern and dovetailing with Councilor Schlag is we're seeing a reduction in federal and state, both grants, but also resources and funding. And so while I appreciate the four priorities, I think they're key. I think we might be also competing with other more fundamental priorities. And so I, too, would ask that the city manager weigh those, because we don't want to reduce what are key essential benefits to the city, and these would obviously benefit all individuals, all community members. And so just to, with that mind of how much is it going to cost, what priorities are there, I just would like us to keep that in mind. So, but with that, thank you very much.
All right. Do you feel like you have what you need? Excellent. All right. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate your work.
Thank you so much.
And I want to give a shout-out that there are some people in the audience here who participated, and this is their first time at a council meeting, and some people their first time at City Hall.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. There might still be some cupcakes and cookies for you. Please enjoy.
Thank you.
We have no non-agenda items or executive session, and so we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Good night, Tigard.
Thank you.